We'll call the meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Westegar.
Yep.
Waltman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Here.
Cleveland.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Thank you.
No public forum, we'll go to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Nope.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Waltman.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Thank you. Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Ordinance 467.
That right?
This is what we're looking for?
Yep. Working with Aaron on this ordinance, with the concept really being that, what this really gets to is that if people would choose not to move their water meter from the pit, it just ends up being their financial responsibility, their maintenance responsibility to keep it in the pit. Okay? But I just want to walk through this and we'll hopefully see the big picture as we walk through this. Starting at the top on 9104. Location of meters, that's our current code, is that first paragraph, that all meters gotta be located, they're easily accessible and protected from freezing. Okay? And then, this is new. It's the goal of the city to have all water meters located inside the principal residence or building site where the city provides water. Okay, existing meters located within that water pit shall be moved inside. And all costs associated with the move are borne solely by the customer. In the event that the customer elects not to do that, okay, or there's reasons why they didn't have to, as stipulated in 9105, then the customer's gotta be bound by what happens in 9106. So, the meter setting, again, top paragraph is our current code, that says they got it. The customer provides all necessary piping and fitting for a proper setting of the meter. Okay? So if the superintendent then determines that it's not possible to place the water meter inside, then the meter may be placed at an alternate location with the approval of the location coming from the superintendent. If the water meter remains in the pit, the pit has to be of a design that's acceptable to the superintendent. So we have these pits where you can open them and basically reach in, grab the meter and pull it up. It's on coiled tubing and you can have access to the meter for maintenance on ground level. Or the other thing that was talked about would be basically to plummet so that, you know, water comes in here and it'd be basically up on stand pipes. Meter'd be up at the top part of the meter pit and be very easily accessible for maintenance that way.
Hard to do. Unless you changed everything.
Well, it'd be plumbing it to get it up there, yeah.
But then there's more chance of it freezing.
And that's, the application for that is largely at the cabins where they're just seasonal anyway.
So do they take them out then in the winter? Like they used to?
Yep, the homeowner still could. Yeah.
Mine's in a pit by the, between the house and the garage. And it's a pretty good sized pit. I mean, you can get down there and work on it if you had to. And the meter deal's up on the side of the garage. But that can be left there? Means I don't have any problem?
Under this, it would stay there? If you wanted it to stay there, it could stay there. You're gonna have responsibility for the meter.
Okay, now, say, my only other alternative, and I didn't like it, but is I'm gonna have to dig another water line in and come into the front of the house.
Okay.
And then go and re-rack. You know, I mean, everything's under my garage. I mean, that's the way it's been put in. It comes in underneath my garage and into the house. So I can't get at any of that stuff. There's, well, there's a line going out of there, but as far as putting a meter in, I gotta come to the front of the house and then just tear up everything. So why couldn't I just do it like it's been for years? There's no water in the pit. Don't freeze. Evidently, it did freeze this way.
Our, yeah, our company line on this is is that we would like people to put their meters inside the structures. Okay? Under this, they would have an option not to. But all maintenance responsibility's gonna fall back on you, even though everything is fine right now. Under this, it would say that if we had problems with your meter in the future, it'd be your responsibility.
Okay, say I have a problem with it. Say the meter doesn't work anymore, who knows why. And I decide to go to the front of the house, do I have to buy that meter then?
Yeah.
I do. Otherwise, it's free now.
Well, it's free for us to, we're changing out right now. Normal policy on new house is somebody builds a new house, the homeowner buys the first meter, the city's responsible for maintenance from then on out. So, when you said you're bringing a new line around the front, I was wrong, the city would provide the meter. Cause we provide maintenance. Now,
So, so-
Because you're getting it out of the pit too, you know, which we very much want to have.
Well, I just,
If your meter breaks, other than freezing, the city will replace it, right? So if it just quit working?
Yes, under normal circumstances.
But if it froze and it quit working?
I mean, it could be, it could even be that it just had a malfunction in Gus's pit, it just had a malfunction. Under this, it would be the homeowner's responsibility, even though it just had a malfunction and it's no negligence on their part.
I mean, it's something that's-
Because you've made that choice to keep it in the pit.
In fact, under the location of meters, when Scott and I first talked about this, I thought we could put together a forum to help Lon then get the signature from the property owner where they make an election on that forum and sign it, so that there's no dispute later as to who elected A and who elects B. I think that would help, yeah.
That'd help us too.
Yeah.
So, what you're saying is if it did malfunction on me, or whatever, I mean, it's been that way for how many years?
Mm-hmm.
Who knows? But say there was a problem. I could tie onto the line and go into the front of my house and you would put the meter in?
We would give you the meter for you to install.
Cause I would like to get rid of that pit, but I don't want to tear up my yard either.
Okay.
So when does it have to be done by? Before fall?
Not necessarily, cause, you know, we want to get around and replace all of the meters and we'd like to get that finished basically yet this summer. But if someone has a timeline about what they'd like to do something a year from now, I'm sure we would still-
If you didn't want to tear up his lawn till fall, that'd help you, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow. There's no timeline on it.
Probably the only thing here, Scott, is when will the city pay? I think is the other side of the question.
We would pay for any type of maintenance, excluding negligence, for any meter installed in the main structure. Anything installed in the pit, under this, would be the homeowner's responsibility now, the customer's.
So, if I keep my old meter and you don't put the new meter in?
You can't keep your old meter.
You can't keep your old meter.
You're gonna put a new meter in my pit.
We would put a new meter in the pit.
Oh, okay.
Radio reads.
Yeah, oh, that's right. There you go, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I shouldn't have any problem with it. Should be able, if I decide to want to put it in front of the house, just take it out of the pit and just put it.
True.
Sounds like a bad decision.
But, you know, that's when you, when you get right down to the issue, and this could be a real issue about the public meter, you know, it's transferring, what had been a public maintenance responsibility transfers to be a private maintenance responsibility.
People step on one, bust them, and we gotta keep buying them. We ain't doing that no more.
Just take a look at the bottom couple paragraphs on this sheet too. Meter repairs and maintenance responsibilities. Okay? Again, this first paragraph is current code. Okay? That whenever a meter's found to be out of order, the superintendent would have it repaired. And if it's due to the negligence of the customer, the customer is liable for cost. Second paragraph is new. But if the customer is unable to locate or refuses to locate their water meter inside the inside the building, all costs are paid for by the customer, with all costs including the cost of the meter, maintenance, and replacement labor cost and any additional hardware and fixed machine. That's it for the ordinance.
Lon's happy with this?
It accomplished what he wants to do.
So is it a motion? For the first reading?
First reading, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
For the second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hoss. Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Waltman.
We want to waive the three.
There's no great big rush. I think maybe we can give some public input time.
Yay. Okay, we're on to the JEO contract.
Yeah, just that we had went through this stuff all at the last council meeting, but we did not have a formal motion to enter into this contract with JEO. Again, their letter of intent says anticipated project cost of about $230,000 and the engineering fees and the architecture fees on this are $29,800.
So I guess my question about this is in the event of a storm shelter, I know it's not a storm shelter, but how many people could we get in there if we had to?
Well, that's still subject to design. That design that you have there was what he based his cost estimates on. And that's just asking a couple questions about how many fixtures we would like in each one of the sides and then they could, can base the size of the building accordingly. You know, if it's, we would bring this to camp staff, to the council, to whomever for designing it though, to make sure that's really what they would like for the actual layout of the building to be. So, if we can get a larger area incorporated into the building, I sure would like to do that.
I'd like to see that too, because like I said, we're kind of beating our purpose if we're not having some sort of-
Improving what we have.
Right.
So again, it's all just subject to design. That layout's just for cost estimating.
Improvements, I think, are coming in, would be in two different areas. One would be the size and the structure itself and the modernization to accommodate the campers.
Do a lot of people use the showers and stuff?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they all got-
They're used quite, they're quite a bit, you know. Of course, a lot of the campers have their own facilities, but they're still used regularly.
Cause we still get a lot of tent campers down there doing-
Uh, nope, not necessarily. Not too many, not too many tent campers, but and of course, some use by the campers and a lot of use by visitors. The other side of this one though, is that it's the beach bathhouse where it's also used for the beach and all the activities down there.
Well, we certainly need a place for storage for the winter once we're done with the storm shelter.
Yep.
We just need a motion to approve using JEO as a contract.
Yes.
Also move, for the second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Waltman.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland. Just a little update on the project and really not too much to update. You can see, that was on page nine, was the bid document that went out for those concrete pads. Bids are due on the first and we would have council action on that on the fifth with a completion date of the 30th. So that's four weeks of work time for them. So it's a pretty aggressive turnaround time. We'll see how that goes.
Oh, anybody could put a bid in if they want to.
Anybody could, yeah. We sent out 14 bid packets or something. So anyway, that's the bid document. The other thing to talk about is the use of TIF. We'll have some procedures coming up on TIF at the next city council meeting. We'll be setting a public hearing on the amendment of our urban renewal plan. And that will, what happened on the first meeting in June then. So in the meantime, we'd get all our amendment completed, which just talks about the project and how much it would incur for debt to finance it. Now, it would, it will say in the plan that we would incur up to $400,000 of debt to finance it, which is more than what we anticipated it to be. Okay? But you never want that number in the plan to be less than what the cost would be, because that would be the maximum amount that you could ever get from TIF then. If we put this 400, that'd be much. So you don't want to be short on that one, so. Anyway, that's all gonna be happening then at the next meeting. One of the things though, would be to talk a little bit about the financing and using TIF. And we are anticipating just using an internal loan to finance that. Be using electric funds again from what is our electric improvement fund, kind of a rainy day fund, so. The debt issuance, we repay ourselves over the next, not this upcoming year, but the following two years after that.
With the TIF funds.
We should be basically repaid after that.
In two years, is that right?
Yeah. So it's not 15, not 14, 15. 16, 17 would be done, repaying ourselves.
Seventy, okay.
Are you okay with that? The sock rail trail sign. I had a committee of a couple gals come to the house a while back and they'd been proposing this. And they just sent us up pictures. They're gonna put this down where the trail starts, the second time. And they're gonna finance everything. City's not gonna have to do anything other than give them permission to put it there. Jim's here in case we have any questions. But I think it's a damn good thing for the city to-
What's it made out of?
Steel. I think it's gonna be 3/8 inch steel, seven by 10. The bicycle tires and the ladders will be cut out. So you can see through that. The star for, you know, like you, will be cut out. I think the black trim all the way around will be raised somehow.
Okay.
I haven't heard a whole lot about this. There's supposed to be a couple other guys here, but they, I guess they didn't show up. We're supposed to know a little more about it.
You probably know where they're at.
Yeah. I drove past there, they weren't there.
And Workmeister's gonna do the landscaping.
Workmeister would do landscaping. I think it's King, not-
But Sat?
No, it's not Rod, it's somebody else.
By Auburn?
In Auburn, I think.
Yeah.
Wasn't that last design, was that to be in memory of-
Tanner.
Tanner King. Around the Wildage, yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
Wasn't that last design of that tree or something? Was it gonna be in memory?
It was gonna be, they were thinking of a palm tree or something, yeah.
I sure like this a lot better than the palm tree.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
I do too.
This is a great thing, I think.
Yeah, I like this.
Yeah, I did, I sent this out to the park board and they've all responded very positively. They'd be in favor of that too.
And then our, you know, for like the flowers and the flower bed, it'd be kind of maintained by our bicycle team. So, it's a blue bus. I don't wanna be your friend.
I like that blue bus.
It'd be a good thing for us to get together and, you know, kind of do every year.
As if you need another excuse to get together.
And we, you know, try to have it all done by our, what's it called, the bike bash that we have every second weekend in June where we ride, walk, and bring the carmen in back, so. And it would be funded, you know, by donations from that and, you know, the entry fee for the bike bash.
So we're looking for-
So what do you need?
Kind of a little tribute to Jeremy Schulte.
Sure.
He started the bike bash and we just wanted to-
I'll make a motion, we move forward with the-
I'll second.
Authorization of the sign.
The one with the flowers. Well, I like that better.
Yeah.
And permit the placement of this on city-owned land?
Cause that city land where-
Yes.
That is up there?
Yep, it is.
Looks like it.
We thought in there in a little angle and we all went down there and kind of tried to find the best spot.
It looked good. Did Terry second that?
Yes.
I did.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Waltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Thank you. Cleveland?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim, put her up.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't know if we're gonna try to get it done by June, you know, second weekend in June or not. But we might get part of it, huh?
All right. We appreciate the efforts.
Yeah. Nothing better than having community involvement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the apprenticeship program.
You wanna talk about that a little bit, Bill?
Bill?
Where they stood on the testing?
Brian Jeff went down last Monday and Jeff missed the second year by two questions and Brian missed the third. Do you remember how many he missed by the third year, Scott?
Yeah, three or four questions, I think.
It was really tight. But they've all been studying and trying and really working at it. Brian's hoping to get his done in six months and then Jeff hopes to have his done in the next six months. So if they can be completed in one year. Everything went really good with it.
How much study time are you allowing them now?
Right now, there's not gonna be very much. If it rains and they get caught up in the shop and-
I'm not, I'm just wondering if they get an opportunity to do it. That's what I was wondering.
If it's, you know, raining out and they're caught up, then they go up and study a while and-
That's your-
It's really, cause we're really, this is our busiest time of the year right now. And they've been studying at home too and they got all the books.
Bill, you said Jeff missed his? It was about, on the radio, had nothing to do with the electrical-
Had to do with radio transmission.
Yeah.
Talking on the radio.
Yeah, certain way to do it, I guess.
So I guess that the program kind of works like, you know, you can think of it in terms of like semesters, where you'd go through chapters during each semester and then after each chapter, they do an online exam. They pass that thing, keep going on to the next chapter. And then, when you get through all of these chapter exams, then you're gonna be eligible to take the semester exam, which would be the end of the year. So, Brian will start in year three and he would basically then have two years to work through with each one of these chapters and then the final exams. And then Jeff would start after that and he starts in year one, out of a four-year program.
The last time we talked about this, did we decide that they, you know, as far as us paying for all of this and their training and stuff, as far as, you know, if they jump ship right away, are they gonna pay us back? I remember we had that discussion.
Yeah, I do, I remember we had that discussion. I don't know that anything came of it. There's, I know there's nothing in the union contract about that. It would just be whether it was a-
Cause I'd sure like to keep them around after we do this.
Yeah.
You know, because it's a good investment on the city's part to have them do it, I think. But on the other hand, I don't want them going to-
You guys recall that?
We talked about that.
I know we talked about that.
But that's, you know, that's something you have to sit on as a council to put a plan together on that part of a deal, like I said. But I think that only makes good sense, business sense for our, we make that kind of investment, we true and expected return investment from them and their time, especially if we're helping them to become journeyman. Eventually, that's what their goal is to become, so. And I, you know, I take a look at us, we're very fortunate to have the electrical program we got here with the individuals. If we don't, just go a few miles away from here and you can understand what they got going on. Have to talk to a couple different people on that, so. Again, it's up to-
That's a different, that's a different deal.
Yeah, well, but I'm just saying that we're- We're lucky. Yeah, we're lucky, but we're also making the commitment of continuing to have good service by getting our people trained. So I think we're making a dedicated offer to them and I guess I would, that's something we should think about at the end of this. Of course, this to me is all negotiable items through the union, because that's all gonna be part of the coming up to it. As far as I'm concerned, this is something that doesn't go on the table until the union brings it aboard. That's my opinion.
I can agree with that, it's-
But, you know, and this is the confusing part to me, that as we get into the next paragraph, Bill, the pay classifications. And, you know, I agree with you 100% Whitey, that the part that I'm struggling with is the pay classifications have already been determined by our prior council and by the union. Correct?
I don't know if the union have involved-
Well, involvement enough to where we said, here's the classifications and notified them.
So, so basically, Bill's stating that Jeff has met those criteria for that. So basically, are we obligated now to give Jeff that $2 an hour increase that Bill is suggesting right now?
Sure. It's-
That's the decision?
Yeah, I think that's the decision, yeah. You know, is it a-
It's already-
It's a classification thing, you know? Does it meet the criteria of the classification?
He's met the first one, right?
Yeah, I think without a doubt, you know. They've, both Jeff and Brian have been here for 13 years. And half of it is, half of the criteria is the 6,000 hours on the job. And that certainly met without a doubt. The other one is this 576 hours of related instruction is equivalent to the amount of the educational program Brian had been through before he came here.
Okay, I'll play devil's advocate here then. They tested out, and they tested out different.
But is that for different?
How do you determine? How do you, what's your benchmark that says that they? If they were both on the same level, then they should have been both at the same classification, third year as far as I'm concerned. If Bill tells me that they're all the same, why didn't they test out the same? That's, I'm just asking. Just a question. I'd like some input on that.
But- But that's for the apprenticeship program you're talking about, correct?
Talking about, if you wanna raise them up to where the other standard, one tested out at three years.
Three years.
In the third year.
Third year, the other one's only at the first year.
Oh, they weighed for their apprenticeship?
That's right. You're exactly right.
But this pay classification that Bill is talking about now was set up by the council.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, that's a council move, yeah.
And, and, you know, why would I say ratified by the union or whatever? Back in 2001, which to me, sounds like two separate things. Because, because when Brian came on back in 2001 also, he never took any tests either. He just had the experience. But he never took a test saying that he was two years or three years or-
How do you determine, I mean-
I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's what we got these tests for. I mean, that gives you as good a benchmark as anything.
Yeah. But what I'm saying, I guess I'm not arguing against you, Whitey.
No, okay.
I'm saying we, the precedence was set back in 2001 for the lineman first class and which didn't have anything to do with the tests. Okay? So do we have to abide by that? Or should we abide, I mean-
I guess that's a-
Do you understand what I'm saying there? Oh.
I understand what you're saying.
I think you're asking how they get classified?
Yeah. Are they two separate things or?
You're talking about two different-
Right, that's kind of the point that I'm trying to make here.
So-
Two separate things.
So we're basing everything on the judgment of Bill's, what you're saying?
That's not what I wanna say. What I wanna say is, is when I look at this, back in 2001, they made a job classification for Brian when he was hired, which didn't include testing to see where they were at or anything.
But you gotta, that's where you got, that's where you got all the gray area.
I know. And I guess that's what we have to make that decision on, is where we go with that gray area.
Well, I think what we said in union or somewhere in discussion, you can't go up until you take these tests. They wanted to pay increases? And we said, no, we're not gonna allow you to study, we're not gonna pay you to study at work. But we'll provide some money or whatever, books and time. But we'll provide some money or whatever, books and time.
And the program, yeah, get them involved in the program.
If we hadn't talked about this apprenticeship program in the union, if we were just talking tonight and saying, hey, Jeff's got 6,000 hours, he's got 576 hours, he's met that criteria.
Yeah, what if we took this apprentice program thing out of there?
Two different things.
And just had the play, pay classification and put that on the agenda, would that make a difference?
To me, you're, you're, you're now negotiated without the union being involved.
But it was involved in 2001.
We're in a new contract. That's what they have one-year contracts for. That's what will be opened up for discussion in, in the next contract as far as I'm concerned, but that, I mean, that's up to you guys to... And it's nothing against Jeff, I just feel that we, we're in a contract. They, they wanted thirty third-party representation, so now the third party's gotta represent it. And if they feel that's, that's part of the negotiation that they wanna have, then we should have it at the, at the negotiating time.
So, so, is this a job pay classification in, anywhere in the current contract?
Yeah, that, just to the fact that they do have job classifications and this is included in there. We have alignment and alignment first class.
Does it say how much? Does it say anything about dollars?
Yeah, I mean, it says that it's $2 more.
I guess...
I think the question is, is, is this information, it starts here, when Brian was hired in 2001, the phone was adopted, blah, 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 and I think, why do you say, no, that's no longer in the contract?
But it is in the contract. We've, we've gone, we've utilized that for 13 years. Brian's always been paid consistently $2.
So if it's in the contract, we have to, don't we? Yeah, I mean, if it's been judged by Bill, I guess, or...
Well, and that, I guess that's the reason why it wasn't thought of as union issue necessarily, the issues brought by the superintendent, you know, as a non-issue, as a non-union issue. If, although if you're looking at pay, pay classifications or classifications in general, it's a mandatory subject to bargaining. If, you know, if he wants to, Jeff wants to bargain this, we would have to bargain him, bargain in good faith with him. Just the other thing I gave you was, was I know the question had come up about this 576 hours of, of instruction time. Yeah, this would be just a quick recap, as I was sitting thinking of some this afternoon, about how we could put some numbers to it, because in my mind, he certainly had, had adequate amounts of, of instruction time that when they were newly hired, they would go to this overhead or underground school every, every year. And that's about, that's about a week-long school. Maybe on average, one day worth of, of training from IEMU every year, one, one call meeting every year. These, a few hours of vendor training on, on new equipment or whatever. Okay, safety, we do average about three hours of safety training every month. And then just what I call departmental training or tailgate meetings, even just putting down two hours a month there, you can see how the numbers worked out. You can certainly, I think, make the case that Jeff has met that, 576 hours of construction in those regards.
What do you think, Gus?
When do they take the test again?
Either, this was their one shot at the test-out test, or the placement test. Now it is, they, now they'll be in the program and taking the chapter test to keep progressing along.
Okay, but I guess Jeff made it to the first one and he's gotta go to, is it number four?
Yeah.
So, I guess, out of these steps, it means he didn't get to the third step. Do you still give him the $2 an hour, or do you give it?
That's the $64 question?
Dollar an hour.
That's the apprenticeship program. I think it's completely different from what...
And then that's where...
Two months ago, Bill could have come up and said, he, he's got these hours in.
Yeah.
He's, he's met the criteria to be two bucks an hour, whether the apprenticeship and the...
And then would that...
Whether the testing or whether...
And it makes no difference, because six months ago, Bill could have come down and said, hey, he's got his 576. He's met his qualifications to get the two bucks. And we would have been going, well, he made it, he made it. Apprenticeship, I just think is a separate issue, but the union can negotiate that later, but...
But is it gonna cost us more to get Jeff up to stage four than it is?
Other apprentice?
Than it is Brian, because he's already third year.
Well, the only reason Brian got the two bucks, they couldn't hire him unless they paid him two bucks an hour more. That's how this all came about.
If they both complete it in one year, you'll pay the 9.25 if they both do it like they said they're gonna do in one year.
Yeah, so it won't cost any more.
So Jeff's gonna go from one year to four years from now?
That's what they told him when they went down.
And, and during negotiations, if, if, just in case he doesn't, you know, we could say, hey, we've already forked out the top dollar in that portion of it, but I guess...
The union was only involved in the apprenticeship, apprenticeship stuff. The other, this 6,000 hours and 500, he probably met that a year ago, two years ago, and we never took any action because it never got brought up.
I'm, I'm two, having the, struggling on, on separating the two, because to me, they're two different things. The job classification that was created back in 2001 by the council, that is in the thing.
Yeah, in the agreement, yeah, collective bargaining, yeah.
Agreement. So, I think that, and, and I'll make this a motion, that based on that information, we give Jeff the $2 more an hour raise, because it's already been defined in the pay classifications.
Reclassify him as the lineman first class?
Yes.
He's not really qualified yet, though, so that isn't...
Yeah, he is. He met the 6,000 hours. He's already met that qualification. He, he met that, could have met that a couple of years ago. He hasn't done the apprenticeship, but he's, he's met what the city said you had to have. He's already met that for that part.
So actually, Brian, then, he's gonna just stay where he is?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They, they both do identical, same work.
So did they forget about this when we met?
Has never been brought up.
Never got brought up?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's just been that Brian's been paid $2 more for so many years and it's never, never been discussed.
So they'll be both paid the same, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Jeff will get $2 more. I mean, haven't, I mean, the past, you know, I got a rate, 2% raise last year, you know, I'm still gonna make a little bit more than...
Now, now, because, because the first-class position just remained $2 consistently higher than lineman. So it's, it, it didn't ever grow apart by a penny or two.
And Brian will be okay with it, so?
Well, it's not really up to Brian, I guess, because...
Yeah, because they're both still gonna work on the apprenticeship program.
They both do the, they both do the exact same job.
So my motion is to make Jeff the lineman first class and...
You have a second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Wilton?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Stank him.
No.
Okay, public works report.
Yeah, Lon's farming tonight and he didn't really have too much. Anyway, he...
That's all his good, no news is good news.
Please let me, let me be the bearer of bad news. Just that they continue to have more problems with that lift station that's kind of out by Aaron's, that east end lift station and their things plugged up with rags again this morning, pull it several times a month.
Michelle called me right before I came down here. The lights were going off, Scott.
Oh, really?
Boom. She called Lon out and just, that's why I thought he wasn't here, because he was out there, but...
Uh, Lon's just looking at some alternatives out there, too.
I'm just for, I'm just glad it's on the other side of the road.
But the lift station still serves you.
Yeah, I know that, but...
Yeah, and it has been narrowed down to the, to the notion that, that these rags or whatever they are, coming from the south side of the road, they're out at Aaron's.
Maybe you'll find out.
You don't suppose somebody's mad at us somewhere along that line?
I don't know.
It's the same rags every time, Scott?
Yeah, you know, well, to, to hear Lon talk about it, you, you can't tell what these things are by the time they go through the, through the lift station and, and get ground up, but they're just really fibrous. You can't tear them by hand. So they're either some wipe of some, some type, the other notion would be some sort of a diaper or an adult diaper.
Don't look at me.
So when are we gonna do that manhole?
Yeah, that might... Is it warm enough to pour cement?
Yeah, we can now, anytime we can get it on, get it on the list now, it's warm enough, we can...
So does it plug theirs before it plugs the settings?
The line does not plug.
Hopefully it does.
It just jams the pump.
If, if you could go in each manhole and put something in there to kinda catch something before it gets there.
And he's done that.
Yeah, they put...
Lon, Lon has a pickle fork, he's, he's had down in every one of them and you can, and you can identify kinda what's, what's going where. And he has a pickle fork, it's basically in, there's a manhole across street from this. And that's where this fork had been and that's where it catches things.
Use it to narrow down where it's coming from.
On the sou, on the south side of the road.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you gotta keep moving up towards the end.
So how far does the sewer go to the south when it hits the west corner?
It goes to the corner, yeah, and it turns and goes south, straight south a little bit, but there's not, no houses there yet.
It's just from that corner going east.
Well, because the trailer court there is not hooked up to it.
No, it's not.
Campground flows the other way to...
No, but I, but I don't need the campground, I think that...
Yeah.
Matter of fact, we have a agreement with the Blackhawk sanitary district back from when they got annexed that said everything west of Rolf Avenue, so everything west of, and going towards 30 Acres Campground has to be sewered to the west.
They were afraid of the building coming their way.
Very concerned about capacity, yes.
There, I think that's sewered to the, on the south side of the road there, I think that's quite a bit higher than what the rest of it is.
Yes.
Going east, or going west. No way you'd have to have a lift station to get it to that.
City administrative report?
Uh, just a few things. Just, I, I put in the memo about this Quincy Avenue Bridge project. And this bridge is about a quarter mile north of TCT, it's actually on that gravel road. Okay, now, that is the north-south corporate limit line, there is the road, so it's a, a shared responsibility there between the city and the county. We got a proposed 2080 agreement from the county and Aaron has that, she's reviewing it. But it stipulates what we had, had agreed to before. The city was awarded this grant to fund 80% of the bridge. So the, the remainder needed to be shared between the city and the, and the county somehow. The city agreed that it would put in up to $25,000. Of the, so the estimated cost is now $600,000 and 80% then leaves at 120 as, as the local share and we're, we'd be in for a maximum of 25,000. The agreement stipulates the county as the lead partner on everything. So as we look at this, hopefully next time, it will stipulate that the county has, has all responsibilities on it, basically. Just the, the give and take on that, though, is that if you had any input into the design, basically the county would design it.
Sounds like it's their baby.
And it really is. I mean, you think about that, that in all practicality, it's a county road. It just happens to be on the corporate line. Blackhawk Lake Trail Phase Two, right out by, out by Gussies. We did get some good news on that, at least as far as the wetlands area there is concerned and that it will avoid that wetlands area. We will not need a wetlands permit, which takes away any involvement from the Corps of Engineers. Speeds up the process actually quite a bit. Now, still, having said that, you're remembering that it's, it's all funded by this grant, it's a DOT grant, federal grant, so we need to jump through all of their hurdles and one of the hurdles is that it has to be let through the DOT for bidding. And they have a really protracted schedule about timelines that have to be met for, for bidding. And now it looks like the bid date will be November of this year. It does take about six months to bid a project there. So, uh, bid date at the earliest being November and construction then likely next spring on that Phase Two of the trail.
I bet it takes so long, just talking, but we've got one more dry year and after that...
Uh-oh.
It switches, it rains a lot. I mean, it'd be a lot easier to do it now, conditions are right.
True. Uh, this, the epic Iowa road trip that the state tourism department is bringing around a big decorated bus. Anyway, they're mainly, they're bringing around some filmmakers going on an eight or nine-day journey across the state, stopping at different places along the way and filming all the great things about traveling Iowa. So they're gonna be stopping here and, and the date on that is May 8th, it's a Thursday night. And they will be staying at Boulders, having dinner out at, out at Ryan's. Though, and the mayor and council are certainly invited to come on out there. As a matter of fact, I was talking with Shirley. She's really relying on us to at least entertain the folks while they're here. So we're looking for some good entertainment, Whitey.
Get a Kegger and we'll get there started.
No problem, I've got that figured out.
But I, I do need an idea of how many people think they could attend that, because we just, just, we gotta set up reservations at, at Ryan's. So hopefully many could attend, because it'll be a great thing, good thing for promoting tourism in the state and us particularly.
Isn't that League Night?
Nope.
No?
No, if, if it's Sack County League, it's a Wednesday, so this is a Thursday night.
I'm talking golf league.
Yes, it's golf league night, so I, I'll have to find a sub for that.
I feel your pain.
I'm not missing the big road trip bus.
No, I'm not either.
Anyway, let me know, you know, shortly if you think that you can attend that. The other one, this Thursday, Northwest Iowa League, we host out at Ryan's, social times at 5:00 and dinner is at 6:00. And I hope that several can attend it. Is that a definite maybe, Whitey?
Definite maybe.
Know your schedule?
Yeah, I've gotta go. I'm going all the time tomorrow. I think I gotta go to the DUC Thursday morning, but I could be back Thursday night, so.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah, maybe.
Terry?
Yeah.
Joy?
I'll be there.
Yeah.
This Friday night, Thursday?
Thursday.
It's coming Thursday.
Yep.
Coming fourth.
You have to bring your smiley face.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'll be there. I'm sure about my wife, though.
Okay.
I've got the wine holders stained.
All right.
For giveaways.
We need to provide some door prizes and stuff, so the mayor's making some.
You said...
One bottle wrong, bro.
Starts at 5:00 and dinner at 6:00.
Social time at 5:00 and dinner's at 6:00, yeah. Program for the night is the head of the licensing for alcoholic beverages. And I would just wanted to come discuss some of the licensing issues and that works out great, because actually she'll be here in, in this room doing a compliance meeting for Sack County earlier that day, so we haven't had compliance checks for alcohol regulations for years. We just haven't had any staff to do it, so now they're starting up the education part of things again on permitting.
So what's on the agenda for May 8th when the bus is here?
A little grip and grin?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a grip and grin and do some dinner. We do not give presentation to them or anything. We will have some written stuff that they would, would see about what's going on.
A tour of the town?
We can, we can... We can, we can, well, it'll be out there at Ryan's, so, so it'll be, uh, just a tour of the, of the lake especially.
Maybe we could rent the blue bus, chief.
Maybe.
They're riding on a big bus.
Oh.
Maybe we'd come up with a big boat.
We'll race them.
Give them a little water.
A big boat.
Motorcycle ride around the lake.
There you go, I can do that.
Shouldn't be something with bikes.
Yes.
Get the horses, that's, that's.
Doop on the road.
Get some bikers to come in town, ride around, maybe get a little advertising. I'm not looking at anybody in particular, but.
What was that, Thursday night?
Maybe stop.
May eighth.
Well, you have Thursday night, Ryan, when does that start?
They stop Thursday, right, at Ryan's.
Team straight usually, Ryan, so.
Be nice, though, if you could contact some other ones. More the better, it gives us a, makes us look like a bike hub, kind of, I mean.
It'd almost make you think.
I'd like to make a motion to put him in charge. Do I have a second? No, you're not volunteering, you're just.
Being appointed.
Railroad.
You're getting railroad, it's real simple.
Very simple.
Yeah. That'll teach you to cow.
My, my last thing is just that I need, uh, hopefully I'll be around for the Northwest Iowa League meeting on Thursday, but Nancy's having some surgery that day, so I'll be gone through the day, and hopefully back by that night, her surgery time is early in the morning, so.
And the nuisance in cleanup has been much, much better than the first year we started this, people are much more compliant.
Yeah, so Ted, Ted had been around to see everybody, had given them notice, but, uh, basically, it's, it's a more, more of a kinder, gentler, please clean up and use cleanup day to do it. Um, at some point, if they, if they choose not to, the heavy hand would drop, but, uh, uh, Roger Peterson came in to see me today and had the name of his contractor who was working on the north of the two houses, so Bob Miller lived in that one house, he said that's actually selling on contract. The next house to the north is where Tammy Smith had left, just terrible condition on that house, but he has somebody coming in to re-ruff it and get the exterior done. And it was, uh, Bill Allen, so he had a, a name of a contractor.
Did he have a date, when did it start, or?
Yeah, something this week.
Well, it's easy to follow up.
Pickup was down there today, so somebody was there.
I've gotta complain. Sparkies, can't we do something with that driveway?
We are, we are.
You are.
I talked to Raleigh, he's gonna, I told him we could pay for the first twelve feet, because that's city property, but Lon said, if we get him to do it all, then we'll just pay for the last twelve feet, so that's what he's gonna do, he's gonna do that this summer.
Good needs.
Oh, the whole thing?
From the street down, he's gonna put.
Either that or put a fence across that.
That's what he said he was gonna do, so I have every confidence he's gonna do what he said.
Put up with that.
Well, that's nice.
Because the city owns twelve feet.
Yeah.
They can't even drive out there, but I gotta get on ground, so. Have a second.
Yep, but he's, he's aware of it.
Even that's that.
He thought that would probably be a good idea, to do that, so, that was what, a couple of weeks ago, I went and talked to him.
Oh, yeah, longer than that.
Go back and use a little more decent applause, try to get a date out of it.
I'll, I'll do that.
Just 'cause. Well, it should be done before, really, before camping, it'd be good, you know.
Yeah, before they get hung up.
Sometimes it's kind of tough to get off with good intentions, so.
Well, I will visit with him again this week.
Yeah, I'll admit, bear.
He likes the, he likes our newsletter, he thinks that's a really good thing.
We're here to serve.
Sure we can do a nice story in there about the city partnering with Sparkies to fix a problem.
There you go.
I got a question, excuse me, for the council, that, um, is there actually a leash law in, like, you?
Yes.
Oh, there is?
Six-foot leash.
Or, or it could be, because.
Six-foot leash, or, or under the owner's control.
They have to be under the owner's control.
Right, because I have.
Well, we're getting a lot more owners' control than we are leashes.
I have collars with a little stimulator on my dogs that I use.
Stimulator.
Real well. I don't have to use that anymore, they put collars on them and they're right by me, by Greg or walking, so.
Sure.
Yeah, and do we, you think we should have just yield signs and not have any stop signs, you know, because they don't stop anyways with them?
They've been given a few tickets.
Huh?
Probably not on the yield signs.
I don't think they stop the damn stop signs, or what they, I, I bet I could co- I could give you twenty a day.
Oh, I'm sure.
On my corner.
I wouldn't doubt it.
Yep, and same people every day.
But if you have a dog that's running loose, let Ted know, he'll go talk to him. But if he comes and asks me, then that's when the guy gets the fifty-dollar fine, because I'm not gonna hear it twice.
You're not gonna go twice to the door?
No, I wanna go in once.
Well, whatever, I just think it's something that ought to be more, you know, taken care of.
Because it usually has to have a written report, and that's when they'll go talk to somebody, whoever's running loose.
You mean on the dog or the, uh, yield sign?
Both.
Both.
Tell you what, I'll tell you that.
I would see too many yield signs with leashes on them. It could happen.
We can put a collar on them.
That's stop sign deal, that's a real deal this time, I'll tell you.
Well, yeah, they'll slide right by.
The shy collars, were you talking about?
Stop signs, just a suggestion. No, I was just kidding about the yield sign, because they don't, they don't, they don't stop anywhere, they just yield, so. But I think it ought to be something that's more enforced, that's what I think.
I'll pass that on to Ted.
Well, you know, write a warning the first, the way I look at it, write a warning the first time, if you wanna do it again in.
Is there a certain time of day that's worse than others, or?
Oh, I think it's all day long.
Well, if you give them a warning, that's just an opportunity for them to do it again, so just give them a ticket the first time.
Well, whatever, I don't care what, I think it's something that ought to be, I'll tell you what, you can't believe how many close calls there is on that corner, I mean, really, but.
I'll pass that on to Ted, see if he can.
I've already told him about it a couple of times.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Mean to adjourn?
I know my name, but I can't try and follow it.